We'll call this meeting to order. As soon as I get the microphone going here. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. It is, uh, our Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is at eight fifteen a.m. on November second. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first public comment. If there's any public that would like to comment about any things that are not on, anything that's not on the agenda. We will move forward. Verification and posting of the agenda.
Pam Moore, for the record. The agenda was posted on October twenty-sixth, between the hours of ten a.m. and four p.m. in the, at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second it. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Approval of the minutes of October fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting held on October fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October fifth, two thousand twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. We will move forward with our appointments. Our first appointment is, um, consideration possible action, ratification of a lease between Social Services and Rogne Realty for the property located at five oh three Cleveland Street, Fallon, for the provisional assistance through the Housing and Homeless Assistance Program in the amount of one thousand dollars per month from August first, two thousand twenty-three, through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Shannon?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Shannon Ernst Churchill County Social Services. Since two thousand and three, Churchill County Social Services has leased a property in the community, usually two, to house our homeless individuals coming from the street. We work with them, complete the wraparound services, and then do a placement in the community for long-term stabilization. This lease supports that program. As you know, it has been difficult for us to obtain leases that meet the fair market rents per HUD standards. So we've only been able to get one for the past few years. And that's why we are looking at revising the project. And we've received the Home Means Nevada funds that will start as soon as we can obtain the property for the remodel. But this will sustain the program until July thirty-first as we move forward. If there's any questions?
Any questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ratification as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ratification as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Move on. Consideration possible action, ratification of an agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Services, in the amount of two hundred thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars, seventy-three cents to provide homeless, uh, home-delivered meal services. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst Churchill County Social Services. This is an annual competitive grant that we submit to ADSD to support our Meals on Wheels program. This year, we have been awarded the two hundred thousand, four forty-six to support that program. This is a, um, fee-for-service program, so we get reimbursed based on the number of individuals we do serve. Currently, we have an active, um, participation of seventy-eight individuals. So that's very exciting. The goal, though, is to increase that by a minimum of ten percent this year. We do want to serve those that are most needy within our service, um, area. So if there's any questions, I can answer.
Any questions or comments?
Shannon, was this an increase from last year with the cost of everything going up?
This was not. So it's based off of how many you serve, not off the actual costs. So basically, we get three dollars and eighty cents per meal we deliver. And so we can't show an increase based on population. As you know, when we took over the Life Center in two thousand twenty-one, there was about a hundred individuals on this. But after going back and completing eligibility on those, this is the numbers that we did have eligible. But we are doing outreach to find those that are vulnerable to try to provide those services.
What's it cost to make a meal?
Right now, we're at four dollars and eighty cents.
So we're losing money.
We are. It is, it's very costly, especially that is, includes also the delivery with it. But the trays, everything that comes in that. This was increased in two thousand twenty-one. It used to be three dollars and sixty cents. But we continue to talk to them, um, try to get those amounts up.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and ratify the agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Services, in the amount of two hundred thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents to provide home-delivered meal service.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification of the agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Services, in the amount of two hundred thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents to provide home-delivered meal services. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Consideration possible action, ratification of agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disabilities Division, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, sixty-seven cents to provide congregate meal services.
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst Churchill County Social Services. So this also is a competitive grant to support our dining room meals. As you can see, this is the eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. It was not increased. But it's based on the meals we serve. This one, we do have a suggested donation of three dollars from seniors and anybody over the six, uh, under, excuse me, the sixty years old, it is at six dollars. Currently, um, our cost is a little under four dollars. I don't have that exact number for it. But we do, I didn't note on the last one, the money that is over the non-reimbursable rate, we do use as our match requirement because both of these do have a match, so that you are aware. On average, we're serving ninety-two people in the dining room, which is a huge increase since two thousand twenty-one, which was an average of forty. Any questions I can answer?
Do we get donations? Do we, we seem to get quite a few donations.
We do. We average about, um, a hundred dollars a day in donations for the program. And then we do receive other things from outside. People that don't even come, they hear about our program. We also, through the Fallon for Toyota, we receive funding each year. So when you buy a vehicle, you can designate to have that come back to the Life Center. We are one of their organizations.
Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and ratify the agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Services Division in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents to provide congregate meal services.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification of the agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the State of Nevada Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Services Division in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents to provide congregate meal services. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration possible action, approval of the facilities, parks and recreation departments restructure, title change, modifications to job descriptions. Jorge?
All right. Am I on or I'm off? Okay.
You're on.
I'm on. I'm on? All right, okay. For the record, Jorge Guerrero, Director. You know, as we, uh, move forward with new facilities and more staff, it made sense for us to look at our organizational structure for the department. And so in the packet, you'll see a new org chart, possibly a new title for the department, which is Community Activities, because that's mainly what we're doing. And so with that, also comes some housekeeping for job descriptions. And also a brand-new job description, which was for the event specialist position, which was approved for this fiscal year, which we'll be filling after this gets approved. So, um, so I'm here if anybody has any questions.
The name you've changed it to. I'm not really crazy about that.
Okay.
But it's okay. Jim and I were talking about it earlier and I don't know of any other name you can find. So it really encompasses everything. But that's okay. Churchill County Community Activities?
Yes.
Or the all-inclusive department. Everything under one title.
Yeah, everything. Everything under the sun, so.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the new department structure, update title to Churchill County Community Activities and modify the, and attached job descriptions.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new department structure, update titles to Churchill County Community Activities and modify the new attached job descriptions. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration possible action, approval of a contract between Churchill County and Winged Wolf Innovations LLC to complete a community opioid assessment, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Good morning again. Shannon Ernst Churchill County Social Services, for the record. So as you know, we've had to complete a community needs assessment for the opioid funding. As part of the Resilient Eight, which Social Services joined six years ago, we did go through this process. It was prior to the opioid settlement dollars. During that time, we had a leadership group that we identified certain needs, what were the concerns, and came up with objectives, which a lot of that was Sharps containers in the community so that we could do destruction of needles properly, the RX takebacks, things of that sort. We revised that assessment and submitted to the state for initial review through the NACO office. It was determined that we had a lot more work to do on this and most counties are in the same situation. So it is recommended that we actually contract with Winged Wolf to proceed and complete this assessment. It's not a complete revamp, but it's bringing those leadership groups back together. It's doing community forums and then we would resubmit. This is required through the settlement that we do have this. One of the biggest pieces with this is all community members, agencies would use this plan to apply for opioid dollars to implement new programs. And so that's why it needs to be completely inclusive of just not the county, what we want to do in our structure, but outside for the community as a whole. So today, I'm recommending that we do complete this, um, contract with Winged Wolf. This could be paid from settlement dollars that have been received so far. And as of September thirtieth, we've received just under two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We are holding this in account at Social Services for the priorities that are obtained. Any questions?
I thought we received fifty-four hundred dollars.
No, so that's each different settlement. So you have now four?
I, I think there's even been five, but the, the last one we did was a very small piece of the settlement with Masters Pharmaceuticals. But Walgreens and some of the other larger pharmaceutical retailers had a much larger settlement. It's been over the past year and a half or so.
And they're structured very differently, each one. The largest one that we received was a little under a million dollars, but it's over nineteen years. And so there was two large payments. And then you get small, four thousand dollar payments. The structure's very different for each one. But at this point, this is how much we do have in the account and we're tracking that. One of the goals that was set up was to establish a substance, um, testing through the lab. And so we've earmarked some money to buy the necessary equipment for that once we are ready at the lab to proceed. Things of that sort.
So, so we can pay for this out of the settlement money?
Yes, we can. That is an eligible activity.
And there are other outlying settlements in the future, more than likely, correct? And that may be a question for Joe.
Yeah.
The expectation is to not have any additional settlements, I believe.
That's it.
This is likely going to be it. We'll discuss further at, at that time. But I believe all of the remaining defendants are either in bankruptcy proceedings or, uh, were individuals that are likely to be in bankruptcy proceedings if this proceeds.
And so, you know, just as I commented, we, the settlements, there was a couple of large dollars, but it's over so many years. To make a huge impact, we do need to access the state opioid money, also the settlement dollars. And those are through competitive application. So this will support not only the county to apply for those, but also other agencies within the community.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agreement as presented and authorize the chair to execute the same.
I'll second.
It's been moved, uh, to approve the agreement as presented and authorize the chair to execute the same. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Shannon. We'll move forward. Consideration possible action, approval of a grant funding agreement between the State of Nevada, State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and Churchill County in the amount of six million dollars towards the construction of a secondary water treatment facility. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Chris Bros, Churchill County Public Works, for the record. So as the description describes, this is the approval and the execution of a grant funding agreement between Churchill County and the State of Nevada, State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. So funding was made available through the, the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act for certain infrastructure projects. We applied for this grant several months ago and found out recently that we were awarded six million dollars for the grant. The total cost of the plant is going to be just south of twelve million dollars. So this will cover a little bit more than half of that. The irony is, over the last two years, we have been on the State Revolving Fund priority list for grant funding, either through, um, principal forgiveness or low-interest loans. I found out recently that because they are now considering this project to be a growth project instead of a maintenance or consolidation project, we are now no longer eligible for those funds. We will be going to other agencies to see if we can find low-interest loans or some other mechanism, some other grants for the balance. But this six million dollars is, is halfway there. A couple of specifics of the grant. We have to have the funds obligated by December thirty-first of next year. This is tied to our preliminary engineering report, which we hope to have finalized within the next couple of weeks. Shaw Engineering is doing that. Once we get that finalized, we'll be able to roll straight into, uh, construction, uh, design and documents. And then all of the reimbursement requests for this fund have to be received by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. So that really gives us next year to design and obligate the funds and then approximately twenty-one months to actually go ahead, build, close out and, uh, and start the plan up for, for reimbursement. And with that, I'd be, so you'll note on the agenda item that, um, I have not noted any, um, financial impact for this specific item. There will be a financial impact when I come back in front of you with an actual contract for the construction, depending on what we have, what we may or may not get to, uh, to come up with the balance of the construction. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, you said that it was gonna cost about twelve million dollars.
Correct. So we have six million dollars that we're getting through this. We thought we were going to be getting some form of money. We didn't know how much through NDEP, through the State Revolving Fund. That is not, um, likely to happen. So we'll try to find money for the balance. But for this here, for the execution of the six million dollars, there, there's no money being spent by the county for this specific bid item or, or agenda item.
Is this the one that's, uh, out at the, uh, golf course?
Correct, correct. This is the one that we're finalizing the engineering report on the golf course. We will get rid of the sewer treatment plant that's, that has been there for years and has not been used and replace it with the water treatment plant.
And this will provide water for all that area that's, that, that is, uh, west of the golf course?
So, so what our intent is, this, this, uh, this plant that we're building is going to be an exact replica of the plant that we currently have with the caveat that we can double the size of this plant if we ever need to in the future. Right now, our single plant is, is providing water to everyone. Everyone, you know, south and north of fifty. When we get this plant put in place, we'll be able to take some of the houses and some of the infrastructure that is north of fifty and tie them into this plant and open some more capacity for development that happens in the south. So this will essentially double our capacity that we have to, to, uh, to provide and, and serve our constituents with water, with the understanding that should we need to, um, generate more water treatment, we would be able to do that at a much less cost because all we're really doing at that point in time is adding tanks.
And it's gonna stay right there?
It's gonna stay right there, that's correct. We have a three-acre parcel right there. Our current plant sits on a one-acre parcel. Uh, and so we, with the expansion, we'd need about an acre and a half. So we, we have plenty of room in that triangle over there, uh, in the golf course.
Mr. Chair, Jim Barbie, for the record. Just as a reminder, in two thousand nineteen, we had, um, Shaw Engineering do a consolidated, uh, review and plan proposal, uh, for, uh, basically a design of our completed water system for where we could grow in the community for the county. And, uh, that represented, I think, somewhere around five different water plant locations that would be spread out, all of those being added in, then add redundancy and, uh, increase the volume to the entire system. So this would represent the first of those five that was that plan that was approved in, I think it was nineteen. It was nineteen or twenty after I got here. It was nineteen. Yeah, and so this is just basically the, the continued build-out that gives us the capacity as we have developers move forward in, uh, the short term, long term. I mean, uh, that build-out was intended to be over probably fifty years. And so this, this represents, I would say, a pretty good twenty-year swath.
Well, and we were looking at the homes west of, uh, of the golf course and then that property, um, west of the golf course, which is not developed yet.
So this will be able to serve, like I said, pretty much everything, um, that we currently have north of fifty, with a lot of room for expansion in, in the York Lane area. If we ever want to consolidate, um, some of the community well systems that we have, such as Carson River Estates, they're on, they're on a community well system. This would give us the capacity to be able to do that. And, um, funding agencies look kindly upon doing consolidations and things like that. So in the future, that's something that we would be able to do and, and potentially get grant funding to be able to do that, to kind of bring everybody onto our system.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve grant funding agreement between Churchill County and the State of Nevada, State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for six million dollars for the construction of a secondary water treatment facility.
Second it. I just lost my screen. Pam, I need help. There it is. I got it. Thank you, anyway.
You're welcome.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant funding agreement between Churchill County and the State of Nevada, State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for six million dollars for the construction of a secondary water treatment facility. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to pull any letters out? And we have, uh, no old business. We'll go right on to new business. Consideration possible action, Administrative Order two thousand twenty-three oh one, authorizing the sheriff's office to destroy or dispose of firearms which were confiscated pursuant to NRS two hundred two, three, four, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford, for the record. Mr. Chair, this is a, an annual event that we have to do to authorize the sheriff's office to either destroy, sell, or trade or otherwise dispose of any firearms that are confiscated pursuant to their law enforcement activities. They come in, um, for whatever reason, someone was arrested that had a firearm on them. They can't be returned to the owner of those firearms for, uh, a number of different reasons. And so this allows the sheriff's office to dispose of those firearms. There's a list attached with the order itself.
It's a long list. Any other questions for Joe? Our comments? Entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Administrative Order two thousand twenty-three dash zero one, authorizing the disposal of firearms which were confiscated pursuant to NRS two zero two point three, four, oh.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to, uh, uh, Administrative Order two thousand twenty-three oh one, authorizing the sheriff's office to destroy and dispose of firearms which were confiscated pursuant to NRS two hundred two, three, four, oh. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Looks like Julie's next. Consideration possible action, approval of county-paid term life insurance for county employees. Julie?
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Guerrero, for the record. Joff is, um, sorry that he can't make it here this morning, so I'm filling in for him on this item. This is, um, consideration for sort of reinstating term life insurance for county employees, for full-time employees. The county used to provide life insurance[1709.78] The county used to provide life insurance to all of our full-time employees, but around the time of the Great Recession, when we were looking at cost savings measures, that was one of the benefits that was eliminated at that time. And with the support of County Manager Barbie, the insurance committee worked with our broker LP Insurance and obtained quotes and information to see about possibly bringing that coverage back. The packet that was attached with this has the information on what we are recommending, which is the life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment benefit through Kansas City Life. The cost comes to a total for fifty thousand dollars of insurance, seven dollars a month per full-time employee. So the cost to the county would be nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars per year. That is a three-year rate guarantee, so there wouldn't be any increase in our rates for those three years. In addition, they offer some buy-up plans that are shown on the on the sort of second page that allow, if twenty percent of county employees opt to participate, they have some amazing rates if you'd like to purchase additional insurance, up to five times your annual salary for a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars. You can also purchase spouse and dependent coverage as well, if you opt to do that. And one of the other really nice benefits with Kansas City Life is they offer kind of an employee, it's an EAP-type plan, but that has added benefits to the county employee at no additional cost, where there's identity theft protection, travel, like travel insurance and protection, and some beneficiary companion stuff where they will kind of help someone in the event that they lose their spouse and things like that. So there are some wonderful benefits that Kansas City Life is providing in addition to the life insurance. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Julie? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the recommendation from the insurance committee for the county to provide county-paid term life insurance to county employees in the amount of five, fifty thousand dollars effective December first, 2023.
Second it. Does this include the commissioners?
Yes, I believe so, because you guys get benefits, so.
Do you even want I'm that old?
If you are an employee of the county, I mean, it's full-time employees, although the commissioners do receive health benefits and things. So I'm about ninety-nine point nine percent sure you do receive this coverage. And I will note that if you are employed at the time that we begin coverage in the State of Nevada, public employers have to continue extending whatever insurance they're providing to their employees, to those who retire. So this doesn't affect people who have already retired from Churchill County, but it will affect those who are currently employed and then reach retirement. They will be allowed to keep this coverage and choose whether or not they want to pay for it themselves.
Well, Justin said I was too old.
I mean, your benefit may have decreased by now, but.
Well, it's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation from the insurance committee for the county to provide county-paid term life insurance to county employees in the amount of fifty thousand dollars effective December first, 2023. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. It's unanimous. It's very technical. Consideration possible action, approval of the job description and salary range for Assistant County Manager, HR Director, and for the immediate recruitment for the position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jim Barbie for the record. Again, Joff wasn't able to be here, so I'm gonna pitch backup on this. So what we brought forward for you today is a proposal to take our existing HR Resources Director position and adjust the position itself to an Assistant Manager position, which would include the responsibilities of the HR Department. Currently, we have one HR staff that reports to Joff, as you're aware. Over the past several years, we've seen an increase in staffing within the agency. And then, of course, with the taking on of the Health District under contract, we've seen additional under that capacity. So what I'm bringing forward would propose to increase the salary to reflect the change in responsibilities and duties in the position and add more responsibilities in this. One of the things that happened in our last commission meeting is we eliminated the contract that we had for grants management effective, I think, December thirty first, which represents around forty-eight thousand dollars a year that we were expending on that contract. Those responsibilities would be rolled into this position and then based on the candidates that we receive and the one that would be hired into the position, other responsibilities that make sense with their background would be also put in as part of this position as well. It would require moving through the budget process, requesting an additional HR staff position for processing paperwork, setting up interviews, and doing those kind of things. And I'm trying to think of all the things I gotta hit here, sorry. Then additionally, we are requesting to go to immediate promotion of the position or advertisement of the position with a hiring date of February twenty-sixth, specifically because Joff's last day with the county will be March twenty-third. And I'd like to have a one-month overlap for Joff to be able to go through not only all the duties and responsibilities that he currently shares, but some of the processes that are so vital, that impact across the agency, like the position review process, the position study process, and turning those files and all those parts and pieces over to whoever that successful candidate would be. As you continue to look through the packet itself, you see the job description as well as the differences in costs of the position. Obviously, that would depend who came in to the position and, you know, what ask we had in terms of their experience and background. But it gives you an idea of what the cost increases could be, which is from twenty-five thousand to, let me flip them through. I think it was thirty-six thousand, somewhere in there, maybe a little more than that. Anyway, that's the position request that we're putting forward, and I'd take any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments for Jim? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the class specification for Assistant County Manager/HR Director, assign it to pay grade eighty-six, and approve the immediate recruitment for the position with a proposed hiring date of February twenty-sixth, 2024.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the class specifications for Assistant County Manager/HR Director, assign it to pay grade eighty-six, and approve the immediate recruitment for the position with the proposed hiring date of February twenty-sixth, 2024. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Our last item is consideration possible action, advanced step appointment for Kristy Bicaris as Aquatics Facility Supervisor. Jorge?
For the record, Jorge Guerrero, Director. Recently did a recruitment for the aquatics supervisor position. We were able to interview Kristy Bicaris. And if you know, Kristy had held the position previously for about fifteen years. And so we decided to, of course, give her the position. And so with that, when she left, she was at the top of the range. And of course, she'll be coming back, as far as we're concerned, as a superior candidate. Like I said, all of her experience was in our aquatic center. She's also holds all the certifications, which may be certifications. She's one of three aquatics people or professionals that holds those in northern Nevada. And so I think it's gonna be a great opportunity, not only for our facility, but just for aquatics across the, at least in Churchill County. And so we're asking to start her on step nine of the current rate as far as for the position. And the additional cost is fifteen thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, which will go, need to be added to our budget, so.
You got a good candidate right there.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the advanced step placement for Kristy Bicaris to step nine of grade forty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-five an hour.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the advanced step placement of Kristy Bicaris to step nine, grade forty-eight. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Consideration for future agenda items, is there anything that anybody wants to bring up?
Mr. Chair, based off of your comments earlier, would you guys like a presentation about the total of our opiate settlements and what that's expected to look like over the next couple of years?
That would be nice.
I'll put that together.
Okay. Don't make it really long. I'm just joking. I don't care. Any other future agenda items? Okay. Commissioner and Management Staff Reports. I will start. I attended the Cantaloupe Festival Committee Meeting the other night, along with Jim, and it was a bi-opening event. It was interesting. I will be attending some of their monthly meetings as well. Also, I attended the NACO Board of Directors Meeting. And also attended breakfast yesterday with the mayor. Justin?
I attended a LaHonton Conservation District Meeting, and also we had a senior coalition meeting.
I had a Central Nevada Regional Water Authority meeting. I thought it was kind of important to bring up one aspect of that meeting that we discussed was a water right retirement program that they're implementing. So CNRWA was awarded seven million dollars to buy water rights from over-pumped, over-appropriated, or basins that have already been over-pumped, like Diamond Valley and stuff like that. Not really applicable to Churchill County at this time, but I think it'd be interesting to watch where that goes and how that moves forward.
Okay, thank you. Before I move on to Jim, I did attend a Carson Water Subconservancy District Meeting last week. And I want you to know that we really need to do some things to make sure that water's not being siphoned off from, we had a presentation by the state water engineer, and they talked a lot about Humboldt County and about our Humboldt River and about Persian County. And I told him, I said, "We're in about the same situation that Persian County is in." And I said, "We're at the end of the river." And so I said, "We are very concerned about the use..." And I said, "I'm not being critical of Douglas, Carson, or Lying Counties, but there is growth in those counties and we're concerned about wells being drilled near the river and things like that." He didn't answer any questions. So that's that, I just made that statement. Jim?
Continue to work through the Ranchera donation and process. We're hoping, our goal is to have that finalized and resolution and be able to start pulling some material and items from that facility next week. I'm not sure that we're gonna hit that mark, but that's what we're trying to achieve. I'm meeting later tomorrow with College Agriculture staff and RCS staff and some other folks discussing the potential of the University Farm, the hundred and sixty acres, being purchased as part of an ag literacy, sniplama project that would then allow greater access by the College of Agriculture on the property, along with others. It's currently largely wrapped up in an RCS lease, and there isn't much activity out there if you've been by it. So that's a long-term issue that we're working on that, you know, is probably looking at taking almost a year to get some kind of resolution or figure out if it's gonna be viable or not. Additionally, the sniplama grants are due for final submittal on Sunday. So staff is working diligently on those narratives and as I just read from an email, performance measures that have been updated. So we're working on that, and we continue to pursue a reimbursement from Bureau of Rec. It's ARCOM, understanding that they continue to discuss it in DC, but no movement on that as of today.
Thank you. Sherry? Joe? Pam?
I just wanted to mention that Linda and Sarah are currently, Linda and Erin are currently meeting with Secretary of State's office, doing election stuff in a conference in Reno, so they're busy with that, of course.
Claims and payrolls? And our last public comment. Then we are adjourned.